Council meeting to order Wednesday, February 17th at 7:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting notice was noticed here at City Hall, Piggly Wiggly and Dave's Ace Hardware.
Item number two, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there... There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries and we have an agenda. Item number three, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. So some of you are probably here for the public hearing and we'll just have them wait until the public hearing. Did you all sign in though if you wanted to speak?
Okay.
Alright. Anybody else want to talk about any other items besides the public hearing?
I'm on the list just for information if there are any questions.
And you want to do that right at your number?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Item number four, approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Item number five, public hearing and discussion and possible action regarding the assessment of water mains for the 2015-2016 water main installations for North Janesville Street and East Bowers Lake Road.
If you'd like, I could give a brief explanation of the project and then Dan could go over possibilities for the finance part of it.
And then open the public hearing?
If that's alright.
That's alright.
Okay. Well, tonight's is the public hearing. It's scheduled for the assessment hearing for the water main installation out on North Janesville Street and Bowers Lake Road. And we send out letters to the property owners that are...that butt the areas where the main will go in. The main is going in to continue with the looping system that we're trying to do with all the water mains so that we don't end up with trying to get rid of as many dead ends as we can in case we have a water main break that an entire subdivision isn't shut off by just water on one side. It also, eventually it helps with the development of some of those areas, you know, that don't have water main there in case they ever do want to hook up some of the empty lots and some of the other areas. It does go by the current residential properties that don't have water main where it allows, if you do need to hook up, like if you're welded in work or something, you could hook up then to the city. There are a couple of properties that are listed on the assessment that they're listed. One property is a corner lot that the ordinance doesn't have an assessment for because you're forgiven 140 feet on the long side of a corner lot. So that property would show a zero assessment. And then also by the golf course, that property's in the township. So that's not listed as an assessable property right now, but if it ever came into the city or if you ever needed water, that's why that one's listed, just in case it ever happens. But for right now, so that's listed as a deferred assessment on those list of costs. So, and it's also, you know, it's to get the better, you know, fire flow out there, the more gallons in that area. And it's just a continuation of trying to get the looping system out there. The city council decides at this hearing. The ordinance has that the water mains are 100% assessable to the property owner and the cost on that assessment is the half price of the main. So you're only charged for your side, you're not charged the per foot price is divided in two and then each property pays that half of that price. And there's, and the city council, like I said, will decide the assessment, the way that it is divided up amongst the property owners and Dan could go over the different options that the city council has for that.
So we looked at the history of what the last two special assessments that have happened in the city recently. The most, the one that's most relevant to this situation was back in 2013, there was a water main special assessment on Vincent Street. And there was about a half dozen property owners that had assessments ranging from 13,000 to 40,000. And that was, that was assessed over a five-year period at 0%. And then the other one was last year when we did Park View for curb and gutter, which is something completely different, but relevant in terms of it was a special assessment to property owners. We said if the amount was greater than $500, we would allow for repayment of up to five years as long as a minimum payment of $500 or one-fifth of the assessment was paid each year. And we charged an interest rate of 4.5%, which was the city's borrowing rate plus 2%. So on this memo that we put together under the assessment options, tried to put placeholders so you can fill in whatever numbers you feel are appropriate for the situation. The first option is repay the assessment at blank percentage over X number of years. You can fill in the blank. Number two is if the amount is greater than blank, you can allow repayment at blank percent over blank number of years. The other one is you could just make the assessment do in full once the exact amount is determined. And then option four is applicable to those like Howie had said earlier that are in the township or...yeah, that are in the township where...
Or, or, um, just, or like in an instance where they almost, everyone that has a house out there now has water. So that's why number four was in there, that they already, they already have connected to a well or they don't need a connection right at this time. But it's so that you cover it at some time. The cost is paid back when there is a connection. That's why the fourth one is in there.
And then just as a point of reference, the water revenue bonds that we took out to help pay for all the various water projects in the city, that interest rate was 3%. So. Howie and I can take questions now that we've kind of outlined the options.
Okay, I will open the public hearing now for public comment.
If you'd like to speak, come up to the podium.
Does anybody not know me? Okay. Chuck Nelson, 340 North Janesville Street. I guess I have a couple of questions. So what is driving this as far as, you mentioned that there's a loop. Was that something that happened initially during the original design or?
Well, the original design was, was, you know, when the main went out there, it was just Nelson Avenue. Since then, there's been more, you know, they've gone farther out. We have had a couple of main breaks where we've had to turn off the entire subdivision. And so that's why we try to make all the looping systems now so that it goes all the way around the entire subdivision so you can get water from two directions.
Okay. So as far as that, going across our property, of course, the majority of the line is people that presently don't need water.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
And the improvement is just water. You're not doing any sewer improvements or anything at this point.
No, just water at this time.
So it's not really affect, it's not going to improve our property value theoretically?
Well, it...
Other than we'll probably get taxed more for it even though our properties aren't going to go up in price. Because without sewer and water, our value hasn't improved, right?
Well, I don't know how the assessed value works, but the improvement is, it's just the cost, you know, the price of what the main is goes in there. And I guess it does allow you, if you ever needed the water to be hooked on, you know, like if you're welded in with it. I know a lot, you all have the septic tanks and the other. Sanitary sewer is a separate assessment, but, you know, that's the same situation. It's a hundred, you know, it's eligible for 100%.
Yeah.
We didn't plan on putting both in at this time because at this, you know, if there's development the other side of the road, then that would need sanitary sewer. This was to just improve the fire flow and to prevent the main breaks from turning off the entire subdivisions when that happens. And the only way to do that is to go all the way around, you know, to Bowers Lake all the way back to just, you know, like 20 feet past the existing Nelson intersection.
So is this really a result of an engineering flaw when that, when that water was extended and approved to do in the subdivision?
No, there wasn't. It's just, uh, it's just, the city is just growing for expansion. That's, that's why. It's just, uh, it's just to take care of the expansion. It's just the way the city's growing that way.
I guess my question is more of when that was done, you have a city engineer approving and looking at that design, correct?
Right.
So there was a design plan for that water plan to supply the existing. There's no expansion going on. So we're really trying to find, fix a default in an engineering design.
Well, the...
And I think that all of us are ending up having to pay for that.
And at some time, development across the street, if that occur, if that happened, that would be, it would be an assessment at some time anyways. And what we're just trying to do is to, you know, it's been, you know, bit out, we're trying to improve the water quality right now and take care of like the main brakes and stuff right now. So across the street hasn't been really engineered except like our engineers have, you know, have done this to take care of the, I guess, just increase the flow and prevent, you know, the water main breaks and other things to get to the subdivision. So at some time, there would, there would be an assessment and it was just to just get it taken care of right now because we're trying to close up these loop systems and get rid of the dead ends as many as we can.
And I think my biggest concern is, which having a large part of the property across there is, it's a very...
Yeah, you have three lots, yeah.
It's very significant and I don't know how I'd ever recoup that money, first of all. You're gonna, the cost of the water line alone is more than probably what I can sell my lot for. So I mean, I'm really getting hit hard and I think that there's several other property owners probably feeling the same way, but definitely something that I'm not hooking onto and my, it's not helping my property value, it's making it worse because I don't have a resale value that I can sell it for. It's over half of what it's assessed at today. And my guess is it's going to come back and I'm going to be, my taxes are going to go up on something that's not going to help me either. So I guess that's a concern of, you know, my feeling is we as taxpayers are being asked to pay for what sounds like really an engineering flaw at one point, might've been five, 10 years ago. Because if they want to do something across the street, I would assume they'd have to do no different than when Country Club Manor was put in Nelson Avenue. The subdivider had to pay for that and no one had to pay when it went past their property.
But the subdivider passes the cost on to the lot buyers.
But the subdivider, all the properties that passed did not have to pay if they already, if they had a well. The only time they had to pay is if they had connected.
Right, yeah, and that's, I...
So is this, we're not going to have to pay for this unless we, our well goes bad and we have to connect or?
That's, well, that's, that's one of the financial choices for assessment that the council has. That's, that's one of the...
One of the options that we have?
Yes, yeah, it is, yeah.
Because I know when they did that one, they ran the, they actually ran the line into all the homes. And then if they had a bad test report on their well, they had to connect.
Yeah, and this, this one has like the same thing. The water service would go into the right way, you know, for that. You know, it doesn't require you to connect, but it's, it would just, there'd be a service that you could connect to.
Mm-hmm.
But that's, that's one of the choices that the council can decide on.
Is if that could be deferred until you have to connect?
That's, yeah, there's four, yeah, there's four different choices. That is one of them.
Okay. Those are the questions I had.
So what Howie's referring to and what the gentleman is speaking about, just so the council's aware, is option number four, which is commonly referred to as a non-use deferment. So that would be an option that's available that Howie and Dan have outlined in which the assessment wouldn't become due until the time that they hooked up to the water main in front of their property for those folks who are on well at this time. One of the options are the council could just defer the assessment until they, they hook up. And that's very, very common. But, so I just wanted to make sure everybody kind of connected the dots there.
One of the questions I just got was this, you know, the assessment value, if we were charged it today, let's say hypothetically, does that include hooking up or is that an additional charge?
It's just, all it is is the main and the water service into the right of way. So someplace in the terrace, just the water service goes that far.
Okay.
And then if you did have to hook up, you'd have to have a plumber run the service from, from that curb box to your home.
Okay, thank you. One of the questions I had was, is the water main sized larger than it would be if you weren't doing a loop? If you were only supplying a main for the six houses that are on that street without water?
Oh, you want to know if it would be an eight inch or a 10 inch?
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, are you doing a, you know, is a larger main going in to supply this loop system than would be if you were only running water to the six houses that are on that street?
It is. It's a 10 inches, it would be larger than, if it was just a residential block, would have an eight inch, this would have a 10 inch main.
Is there also an increased price due to the fact that you're hooking into two existing mains with it?
No, there's not a, not a large difference on that.
Okay.
On that price. That would be pretty much the same, an eight or a 10 inch. That's, that's most of the labor and the valve price. There is a difference though between the 10 inch and the eight inch price for a, you know, there's, whatever there is in that difference of valve size, but the labor prices is pretty much the same.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, I assume you guys have multiple bids for the work to be done? I think that's kind of standard practice.
Actually, this one, we had, we had quite a few bids. More than, more than usual we had for this one. We had, I don't want to tell you exactly, I think we had eight or nine bids on this, on this project.
Yeah, I guess I've never had the opportunity to speak to a $15,000 question before. So, and not sure what you guys have been thinking, so it's a little awkward to give an opinion, but just listening to the questions that have been asked and answered, I don't see why, you know, the people living in that street should pay to, you know, connect a loop. You know, I, I agree that, maybe I hate to say it, but I agree that we should pay some because it is an improvement, but what's being asked is, I'm just not seeing as realistic. I mean, you know, our, personally, our property taxes have doubled in the past two years because of how much we put into our house. I plan on spending at least $15,000 in the next five years continuing to add value to the property. And if we're asked to pay this, that's going to stop and that's property taxes you guys won't be getting because we won't be improving. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your questions and Chuck for your questions too. Anybody else?
My name is Thurlow Nelson and I ran the sewer and water into Nelson Avenue. And I was talking to some city workers, oh, probably two, two years ago. And I wondered what they were doing out by the fire plug and they said, "Well, we're working on putting water down to the condos because they don't like the, the water there." Now, they basically are getting indirectly my water. The only reason I'm saying this, most of you people are much later here than 1978 and you don't know me. But I need to bring this up. This sounded ridiculous when I heard it. Of course Chuck Nelson is my son and he's got $30,000 on his thing just to bring water out to those condos. Now, you can disagree with me, but I had that from city workers that their water wasn't any good. You know, they pumped the sewer up the hill and down through my place, basically. And they get the water downhill, but there was a complaint about the water for those condos. And another thing that disappointed me, when I found out how it's going, it is going down Bowers Lake Road, but it does not even go and cost the people in the last condo going east. They don't even have a charge because that would've put too many feet against the golf course in my record of it. And I suggested these people get a lawyer because this is the most ridiculous thing I ever heard. And I guess that's, I was afraid to even get up here, but then I saw so many of you people don't even know me. And I don't necessarily want to be known, but I do know a little bit about this. And it's totally ridiculous. $30,000 for three lots, two of which the, the value, what they were purchased for is about equal to what you're charging per lot for just running water by for the condos. So you think about that before I write it in the paper.
Thank you, and we do want to know you. Especially if Chuck is your son, you can't be half bad, right?
What's that?
I said, "Thank you and we do want to know you because if Chuck is your son, you can't be half bad."
Well, I did the other and thought nothing of it. And I thought nothing of it when the condo, but when I heard that they had bad water and then when I hear the people that don't even need the water are the ones who want to be charged to pay for it, that sounded completely ridiculous to me. If they hook onto it, it should be what everybody hooks on the charge, 500 or $1,000 or whatever it is. As like a person with three lots or 5,000 feet along the road, what do they want to pay the big bucks they gotta pay? And I hope more people that are charged get up here and explain themselves. Some of them may be on what they can even pay. For example, in my case for, you know, even paying taxes, I have social security. I did this subdivision, which are 53 plus the condos for taxes now and a couple other lots in there that aren't built on. I suppose they pay taxes also, but I got $17 two years ago per month raised in my tax, in my social security. I got nothing this year. A lot of people could be like that. Maybe all those people that are in the condos are rich. I don't have any idea. But I do know this is a tremendous amount of money for running water by your house because somebody thought it was a good idea. We went for, since 78 until right now before we needed it. And this is ridiculous. Got any questions to me? I don't even belong here, except I could explain some things to you, I think. You may close a deaf ear to it, but some of this is just totally ridiculous. You know, like for example Luke, $15,000 to go by his house and he doesn't even need it. Just because somebody got a crackpot idea that they were going to charge so many dollars per foot, for what? You know, let the condos put their wells in and get good water or something. Well, our particular water is in the same river down there as you're pumping it out there, the pump, pump house. So we're getting good water, or I'm on, I'm on city water, but I'm, they're probably getting better water than I am. And I'm not blaming any city thing because it's tough. But probably a ridiculous statement, but anyway, I would like you to really think about it. Just think if water was going by your house and they charged either $10,000 or $30,000 just to go by? I know you have to, in fact, when I did the subdivision later on, I did it during a recession, so up to 86, from 78 to 86, but I paid my way. But anyway, and I didn't make this wonderful money you talk about while they get it in the price of a lot. You, you may, not by the time the person that put the lots in pays interest and everything else, you just, they got them pretty cheap, but immaterial. That, I don't know, this is just beyond belief that somebody could even think of that or threaten that or whatever. If those condos need that water, they should pay for it and it isn't even going by one of them. And I think the reason probably for that is because that would be more feet across from the golf course and each side of the road is paying. And can you think of a guy owning three mediocre sized lots, $30,000? And, oh, like Luke, I think his was 15,000 just to have a pipe running by your house? So anyway, I have figured here what I did, but that, they could blow that all to pieces because that was several years ago. But anything else? I probably overdid it now, but I want you to really think about that, please. Because this is, this doesn't even seem like common sense to me. And Milton may be getting beyond common sense, but the schools and everything, you know, they have everything from Highway 14 and lots and lots of building has come on, but the people, in fact, they're afraid to run a reform amendment because it would be two more years before they could run another and they know it's going to get voted down. That's the school. I don't know what's going to happen on this. This may be lawyers and stuff, but it, it just doesn't make sense because it hasn't been asked for, except at the condos and et cetera. I didn't mean to butt in and I didn't mean to stay this long by any means, but anyway, I think it's ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your comments. Um, is there anybody else that would like to speak? We really would like to hear from you.
I've not signed in on a piece of paper anywhere yet.
Well then, you can, just give us your name and tell us.
My name's Wayne Lubkey. I'm 949 Bowers Lake Road. I am one of the eight groups of people that live in the condos. And from my knowledge or my information, I'm not quite sure where the comments that the condos have bad water are coming from. We've been there for eight years, something like that. We've had some water main breaks, so I'm not sure where the water being bad has ever kind of come up from. I believe technically on the list, two of the eight condos are listed on the assessment in our, and if I recall correctly, the water loops down from Fairway and comes, you know, three quarters of the way across our side of the road to where it ends. And my understanding is the loop will take it back up around Janesville Street and, and close that off. So the two addresses I believe are on there. In our case, we would deal with that whole thing through the condo association. So, I mean, it's kind of, we'll deal with, you know, how we're going to, how we would pay any assessment should they be forthcoming that way. So I just wanted to kind of state that I... So I just wanted to kind of state that I don't know where the, you know, the comments about bad water are coming from, but I think we're, you know, we're pretty happy with the water supply we're getting now. My understand there would be increased, we wouldn't have to turn off water from the whole subdivision or whatever it is if, in the, in the event of another break, and we've had one or two of them already, better fire pressure and everything else. So I understand all that, but I just wanted to clarify that I don't think from a condo perspective that we've got bad water.
And what Mr. Lubkey is referring to is there, there are two properties listed on the assessment sheet that we see on here that have, that are, that are condos. And in speaking to Mr. Ty River from the condo association, the condo association is going to split that up and pay those assessments. So each member of the condo association would pay their proportionate share of those assessments. Mr. Ty River's name is on there and I can't remember the second one.
It's Walters.
Walters. So ju- just so, so folks, that, that's the reference that he was making. So the folks in the condos, actually all the condos are, will pay a portion of this. It's just that Ty Rivers and Walters have street frontage, so that's why they're the ones listed. But I spoke to Mr. Ty River already about it and he explained what their plan was from the condo association standpoint.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, I will close the public hearing and then the council can discuss this. I have a couple of questions for Howie. Do we have sort of a, a long range plan of projects, water projects or whatever, and we, do we rate them on some sort of objective scale as far as what needs to be completed in the urgency or do, sometimes things just come up and maybe we're going to do project A, B, but because project B seems to be more urgent? Or how do we decide what we're going to do?
Okay, for these types of projects, it's similar like the Vincent Street. When we did that one, the Elm Street was on a complete dead end. And so we went around Vincent Street to do that. It also increased the fire protection for like out in the industrial area. And this one, we looped, and then a different loop we did similar to this was Parkview Drive where Brown Drive and Arthur Drive had similar situation, but now it goes up through Parkview and through Crossridge Park. So they have water coming in both ways still. And it kind of depends on what's going on for development and how far they get stretched out for one main. This is, you know, one of the, almost the last areas for a loop system, except for some parts in the industrial area that would need that. Sometime a different looping system is going to be needed out at sometime by Surrey Drive in, in that area. That would probably be a separate next one, but it's kind of to get rid of those long dead ends so that we don't have the, the wa, you know, so if the water main break does happen or the fire protection for, can be a little better with more water coming in both ways. So that's, it's kind of just to keep working on them as they go, is just to get, you know, to get them finished up. And also, if there is an area that you can develop across the street, that helps, you know, for that also, so.
I think to, to maybe add to that, we have a long range capital improvement program within the water system.
And a water study also.
And that's, so that, to answer your question, so we, we have a, we have a water study that, that, that brought forth a number of projects and as, and so there's a long range capital improvement program within the water system. This, we're at the stage of this improvement, and this is how he pointed out, there was, some came before this and there'll be some after this. But there is a plan in place that set forth the capital improvement program for these water main projects. So this is where we're at. As far as prioritization, I'm sure there was a prioritization process that took place at the time that that water plan was created, at the time that the capital improvement program was set into place. As far as what the met, metrics were or how they developed a level of salience, I'm not, I, I don't know. Just not being involved, maybe how he does.
Yeah, it was with the engineer study.
Right.
The 2008 water study was done. And then when we did the capital improvement projects, like a year ago, when we did that entire, you know, went through it, then some projects were added with that.
Um, is there, if we don't do this, let's say we just do nothing, even though we've already, we already went out to bond?
It's already been bid out and accepted bids.
So is there, if we, if we don't do it, is there, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm just trying to understand. If we don't do it, is there a safety issue for the residents, even the ones that aren't going to be connected to the city water, or is there a safety concern?
They, they have the same situation they have now. If you, there's, it's not, it's, it's, um, I guess it's in a, it's, the attempt is to make it better so that you don't have, you know, a situation with a main break with no water, you know, or better flow of water and not stagnant water. That was the situation with the condos is we do more flushing out there so that you don't end up with a dead end where they're way on the end and you don't get bad water, but sometimes you'll get stagnant water in the mains. So, so it makes it better, but as far as, you know, they're, they're not unsafe now, you know, it's just, you know, but it, it'll make it, you know, it'll make it better, but you know, but I, I can't say that the people that live there right now will notice anything, you know, unless there's a main break, you know, they would have noticed last year, but you know, with, with water coming in from two directions, you know, you can always have something happen where the subdivision will be shut off, but this way it shouldn't be with coming in on both sides. So that would be a safer thing, but the people that live there won't notice, you know, really any difference, so.
So completing the project would provide safer fire protection for everyone involved in that area, whether it's the condo section or the Nelson subdivision and Janesville Street. It would also provide better water service to the condo area on Bowers Lake Road, and it would also provide the opportunity for those areas in along Janesville Street to connect to the water system if they so choose.
Yes.
Okay. Howie, how many properties would not, as a, like what you know of right now would not hook up that it'd just be going by?
Well, I, I don't know if, probably none of them would choose to hook up until they need to, until their wells would go, until their wells would be, have to be replaced. Or if someone developed across the street, they have to hook on, or if you develop an empty lot, you have to connect to the city services.
So then we would look at...
You could, you could actually require people to connect as soon as the main goes by, but city policy has been that, we, we haven't done that unless your well goes completely in disrepair. We like, we'd like to let people use up what they have.
So maybe a better way to, to ask the question, because I, because we were talking, of the 14 names on the list, how many folks are currently on city water?
Oh, of these 14, only, only Anthony Tracy.
Okay, so of the 14 names, 13 are on well water.
Well or, or no development.
Or no development.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
So then 13 of the, the 14 could be on the deferred?
Well, the condos are also on city water at this time, the condos, yes, sorry.
So an option would be, if I understand it correctly, that 11 of them, if...
Right, yeah. And, oh, and as the, for Anthony Tracy, they don't have an assessment because he's already connected to city water. The, the one person that's on Nelson Avenue, they don't have, they wouldn't have an assessment in this because they're already connected, so.
Then for number four, it would be, we would defer, we could defer if we chose number four?
Yes, you can do that, yeah.
And then Dan, if we do that, what are the financial ramifications or how, is there any for the city?
There, there really isn't any. This was brought forth because it's been a matter of practice that a special assessment is at least put on the property, whether it's deferred or not, is up to the governing body. We have the money from the bond sale. We would just keep this list and then if, if and when any of those properties connect, we would then assess those individual property owners at that point in time.
Right, I would recommend then doing a, an option of allowing them to defer that they can connect whenever they so choose and that the rest that are choosing to connect at this time would have the option of like number two, where they, if it's over $500, then they had, can work out a repayment system of a percent of something over the course of five years.
So what we're talking about right now, the only two properties that are affected by that are the two condo properties that are on East Bowers. Everyone else would be deferred. So we'd be talking about approximately $12,000 that is split, split amongst those condo unit owners. So given that there's kind of an association in place on that, we should probably find out from the association how they plan on handling that. If they'd want it as a one-time payment, since the 12 grand is being split amongst how many different owners?
Eight.
Eight. So that's right around 1,500 a, a unit owner. So we could do like a three-year repayment on that or?
Yeah, it's really up to the...
Yeah.
Association.
It'd be partially up to, to this group though, to, to set that initial threshold.
Right.
If, if...
I mean, we, we would set the parameters, but the longest you can have is up to five years, but if they choose to do it all in a lump sum, that's, that's great. Three years, whatever.
I guess I'd like to hear from as many people on the council as possible about what their thoughts are.
Oh, you're tired of me?
No, you can come back around a second, Ten Theresa. Thank you.
Howie, I was just wondering, I know that we have talked about other improvements on Janesville Street. How soon are you anticipating any of those things? Because, I mean, I understand totally what everybody is saying, especially you, Mr. Nelson, Chuck, about the cost of this, but one thing that we have to keep in mind is that this cost is not going to go down in five or 10 years. When you decide that you need to hook up to the city, it's not going to be this price, it's going to be even higher. So my question is, what other improvements are taking place in that area that we can plan for that might be affected by deferring this?
Your, your other plans by deferring this, the other plans wouldn't be affected because they're, they're separate assessment issues or separate repairs. Right now is, you know, I mean, there's things that you can assess for, for curb and gutter and sanitary sewer, but none of those are planned right now. And they, they're just, they're different assessment situations. So deferring this, because, also because it's water utility, doesn't affect those other budgets, so, or affect those, those assessments at all. So this deferment wouldn't really have any effect on other improvements.
And just so we're clear, just, just, because I think I understood your comment, if we go forward with this and, and it is deferred for these, for these 11 folks, their assessment, the assessment that's on that page won't, won't change. It won't go up over time. It'll stay what it is. Because, yeah, because if you think about what, what we're doing here, we've got the bids, we've secured the dollars, we'll go install it, and the cost to install it has already been a set. So it, so their assessment will stay the same. I just don't want anybody thinking that, you know, 10 years from now, their assessment's going to be triple because the cost of pipe is 10 times as much. So I just, I just want to make sure that that's more of a point of clarity.
But this, with this improvement, we are getting a 10-inch main instead of what's there right now is an 8-inch main, correct?
Well, there is no main there now, yeah, so, yeah.
So, but, but when these people would connect to their homes, is that a 10-inch main or is that an 8-inch main?
It's, the 10-inch main is what's going on. The water service is a 1-inch water service that comes off of that main, yeah.
So I have a question, and when somebody's well goes bad and they have that awful day that they have to connect, do they have five years to pay for all of these assessments?
That's what you would have to determine tonight if you want to include that in the, in the motion, or in however you want to determine it. You could, I guess you could make another one, the, I guess probably if I'm wrong, Mark, but the main thing is that however you assess, you have to assess so that you get the money back from everyone at some time. So you can set up different ways of payment, but, but you have to make sure you get, when you assess, that everyone pays their, their full share at some time, so.
So would this be like on transfer of property that they would have to pay the assessment? Or as I say, when somebody's well goes bad and they have that awful day when they face this assessment charge, what is the equitable way of splitting up that horrible day?
Right, and, and you could, you establish the payment, the way that they do the payment, so you can put that in, you can add that as that if it's a emergency or unforeseen event that you could do that. Is that, is that all right? I mean, Mark will tell you.
I would go back to the number two then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think specifically what Howie's indicating, by, by statute, you can defer assessments until the, until it's going to be used. That's, that's what you're talking about here. So that's an option that you do have. And that, so then you can either provide that the payment is due in full at the time use is made of the improvement, meaning they hook up, or you can provide for installment payments at that time. So that's one of your options is to say you can defer until hookup and then upon hookup is to be paid in X number of installments. That's one of your options. Just as you can say that, that it's due immediately, but can be paid in X number of installments.
Yeah, I'm just trying to soften the pain of a bad well.
Sure, and you can, you can do that. You can say upon, you can defer until hookup and then it's to be paid in X number of installments if you wish.
Which it doesn't say there.
Then the bond, the bond on this, what are we paying in percentage?
Right.
3%.
No, it doesn't. So you, you would want to, since this is, you would have to add that wording to, for the unforeseen sudden occurrence of a need to hook up, that it can be split into however, what would be a reasonable number of payments for the five years or not? What, what is, what is a reasonable split in payments or what?
Whatever you guys decide.
So as an example, as what you're considering, you would basically combine option one and option four?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think so far what I've heard is everybody's pretty much saying the same thing, but miraculously finding different ways to say it. I think what, what we're looking at is a situation in which, just as Mark described, we would have option one, in which folks who are going to be assessed, and we know in this case would be really the, just the two condo owners, would be assessed at, we'll say four and a half percent or 3% for five years. Those who are not directly impacted or have a non-use of the, of the, of the facility would have a non-use deferment in which they would be then assessed for that improvement at the time that they either connect to city, to the, to the facility, or the time that there's property owner transfership, at, at which point they would then pay their, their assessment for X number of years at X percent.
Or are, or are they assessed and then deferred until one of those two things happen?
I assume for clean closing, you would have to pay it off.
Well, you're going to be assessing them right now.
Yeah, you're assessing them today.
They're being assessed at this time. The payment is deferred until use is what you're discussing. And then the, the second discussion is if you do that, are you going to require payment full at that time, or are you going to allow them the option of it's...
Can I say something? Okay. I don't remember when it was Highway 26 just a few years ago, they were going to build about six or eight, eight families on property, well, on, across from Chuck's is fact, what it amounts to, I think, next to some of these folks. Now, if you could wait until an outfit goes in there to do something like that, they will pay for bringing a lot of it down, I would say. And they would have something to reap the reward. For example, like I was supposed to have had during the subdivision. I put it in, people bought, I paid back, that's what it amounted to. If they were rather than an individual family or party, in other words, you're going by property there, but you're only charging footage on the front, aren't you? See, that party goes back, they could build six or eight, eight families back there. And they were going to do it, but they couldn't get the driveways in because of Highway 26. Now it is no longer really Highway 26, so you can put a driveway about any place that you can get permission for it. Now, if you were to wait until somebody does that, and that land's been for sale for a while about, but that would pay better than individuals along the way. I know they got to pay to hook on when they hook on, but in fact, they had to pay in the subdivision after I'd paid to bring it in. In fact, I had to pay more than it was when I first brought it in to hook on a couple of houses that I did, you know, but that's done. But anyway, there was a plan of that and also then, what do you call it, west, the street going down a, oh.
West side.
I think there's going to be more stuff out there to ask for it. So maybe you're rushing things right now, especially since the gentleman back here said there's nothing wrong with the water at the condos. Any questions? But I just thought of that, and like I say, many of you are young, might even not have been in the area when that happened, when they wanted to do that, but they couldn't put it in because they couldn't get the driveways because it was Highway 26. And it isn't any longer.
Howie, has there been any inquiries into building in that area?
Not, not, not since the development Thurlow was talking about. Yeah, there hasn't been since then.
Yeah. But I, since many of you might not have been in on this, in fact, even Maxine probably wasn't in the area at the time. But anyway, they, they talked.
The Melvin?
She was gone a while. But anyway, that, that would help. I'm, I'm not saying they shouldn't pay anything, but I don't think just because something's cracked up and says, here, you pay for this, we're putting it in. Not when they don't even ask for it. Think of yourself in some kind of a situation similar when you go to a store or something, well, you got this, you got to pay for it, but you didn't even want it.
Howie, can you just review the benefits of our looping system in the city?
Okay, and I, I think it's pretty much like the same that Teresa talked about. You're going to get some better fire protection, you're going to not have the dead ends, you won't have the stagnant water, you should have better water flow and it's, it's supposed to improve the water quality. And then it's there for development if that happens.
I'm going to call a question or a motion or something.
I'll make a motion that we defer the payments of, what, 11 of the 14 properties until they are, until their wells go dry or whatever they do. And they need to be hooked up to the city. And then at that time, I would, I would say that we go with option two with the amount greater than $500 to allow for repayment at 3% over five years.
It's usually three, three plus two. It has to be determined now.
Okay.
Three plus 2%.
3.2 or 3?
It would be five all day.
Over a period of five years, that's your motion? Does everybody understand the motion or, Elena, could you read it back to us?
All right, so we are going to defer the payments of 11 of the 14 properties, at which time we're going to go with option two, which is a repayment of five years at 5%. The three properties that are being assessed now will also have option two immediately, right? Start five.
All will be assessed now.
Mark?
All properties will be assessed right now.
But for the 11, it's going to be deferred.
Yep.
And then when they incur it, they get option two. The people have to pay if they want.
All, all properties will be assessed at this time at the rate of 5% over a five-year period. Those properties who have a non-used deferment will be allowed to defer that until the time that they need to, they're required to hook up to city water at the same amount of five years for 5%. Does that sound about right?
Yes, that's just what I was checking with, with Howie on that, as to why the others were not, would be assessed and that's because they're making use of the city water. So, and so they don't meet the deferment requirements. So I, I agree. It would be, your motion is to, to assess and then if it's over $500 to pay in installments in, in the criteria you've just said. And then it would be deferred with a deferred assessment until such time as the person makes use of the facilities, in this case hooks up, so.
So that's the motion and Jeremy seconded it? Is there any further discussion by anybody?
Can I ask one, just one question? There's a good point that was brought up of expanding the city, more subdivisions, more people connecting. So I'd like you to please consider that if that would happen, for example, across from me where they, they're trying to put in eventually it's planned to be an expand, a large expansion, that those, somehow we benefit from that too. Instead of us funding a subdivision, six, you know, we're, we only have what, 14 people total that potentially are doing that, that that cost somehow gets represented and reduces our, our costs when we connect. I mean, that, it's, it's a shared thing. We find, we're basically, at some point, we're kind of financing it or you're paying for it now, but we're going to pay for it at the end. And really, it's a lot of other people are going to reap that benefit on a connection. And, and you could do something that it's beyond a single family.
And how would you equitably change this for a future non-specified date?
Correct, or you could put some limitation on it, but say if, if that was connected within the next 10 years, that subdivider or person that's doing the improvements and adding multiple units there would pick up a percentage versus just the footage in front of their place. We don't, and none of the rest of us have that opportunity. We're actually going to have to increase the sale of our house above what we think we're going to be able to get for it, just to try and recoup this, this cost.
So, yeah, Mark, what do you think of having five-year, eight-year, just pick, you know, a, an eight-year, somehow to prorate this to a potential builder on the other side of the road? Is that something that is possible?
Well, as I understand, the, the current proposed special assessment has that really built into it because what's being assessed is one half the cost, not 100% of the cost. So one half of the cost would be then of course, at some point in time, assessed to whoever build, develops on the other side. So the city is not assessing 100% of the cost of this water main to these properties, only 50%. So it's already built into, into, what he's suggesting is already built into the formula for assessing it. And of course, as you know, that when that property is developed, all these things would be addressed in a development agreement, you know, in terms of how they would pay it and that sort of thing. So it is, it is addressed.
So to just go in front of your, well, most everybody I think on the list is, there's not too many people that are less than 7, 8,000, most are, 15's pretty average. I'm one of the higher ones. Pat could end up being one of the higher ones. You know, I, just, just looking at it, it, it's not a small amount. So it's a huge expense and I guess now understanding there isn't a water quality problem, are we, I know it's, it can't be water safety because we have fire hydrants all the way around us. They use them to pretty much put fires out all over the township too, but, so it sounds like it's a water quality and we have a, a, a problem with the, the piping itself that was put in originally, right? If you've had several breaks down in that area?
Well, after 40 years, or you know, since 78 till now, you can expect you're going to get some breaks. The, the mains that were all put in were fine. I mean, you know, it's just, those main breaks just happened after weather conditions, the ground shifts and stuff, so. So there's nothing wrong with anything that went in to start with. It, it improves all those things that you're talking about, you know, because if a water main break happens, then you don't have any water. So, and, and the looping system, it does improve the quality. And we did have some of the condo people, you know, at, at different times, ask about the stagnant water and, and that's why we do some extra work out there flushing and stuff, so. So it improves it all, you know, but as, you know, like I said earlier, individually, you're not really going to notice a lot.
Right. Okay.
So I have to, I have to move it along.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just consider the part of, I still even think though, that's really not, you're probably not going to take that expense and go back against that developer, are you?
Well, they have to pay their half.
They're, they're going to pay their part. So they're paying the same footage that I'm paying, but they have a place to recoup their costs. They're not going to the bank and taking out a loan without a way to get it paid back. All the rest of us are going to have to go and take a second mortgage out on our home. Or most of us will, I don't think, too many people have that money laying around, so something to think about.
At the time, at the time you hook up.
Right.
Right, right. Just want to make sure it's
Right. I, just wondering, you know, if a subdivision or large expansion, shouldn't they take on a bigger burden of that cost? Because the pipes being larger, size larger to handle larger capacity, 10-inch versus 8-inch, there was a cost difference there. So there are some things to consider. I don't know how you'd want to put it in a motion exactly, but be something to consider. Thank you.
So we, I, you know, I, can I do the motion, Dan? I mean, let's vote on the motion. You can vote the motion down and come back and talk about doing another motion, but we have to.
Oh, Vanessa?
We have to act on the motion.
One thing, you know, they are talking about the difference between the 10-inch and the 8-inch main. We could look at a, to reduce this because the 8-inch main is more residential, 10-inch is more development. And since it's residential, we could look at the, as, as a reduction in their overall assessment, the difference between a 10 and a 8-inch main as a percentage, that would lower the assessment a little bit.
What might, what kind of range might that be?
I just have to get a price for the assessment. It, it's, it's not going to be like a huge amount, but it, it could be like maybe, just as a guess, maybe a couple of thousand dollars per lot difference, so.
Okay, but we can still, I just, I have to get the motion taken care of, so can we get the motion taken care of without having that in there?
Right.
All right. So do you guys need me to have somebody say the motion again or you're good to go?
Yes.
You're good to go? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion unanimously carries. So there will, the majority, almost everybody will get it deferred that it's not hooked up. Well, everybody will get it deferred that's not hooked up to city, to city water. Now, do we have to have a motion to change from a 10 to 8-inch or do we have to put it on another agenda or what is the procedure now?
Well, I'll, just to make sure, but we, we can find the difference between a 10-inch and a 8-inch and if you'd like, at a, would have to be a different meeting, but we can look up at a different agenda if you'd like to have the residuals pay, you know, just only pay that, what a normal 8-inch would be and separate the distance from a, the 10-inch main, which is more of a commercial size. But that could be on a separate agenda from tonight.
To talk about or to?
We're not talking about it.
You could have it on a different agenda to, if you want to, you know, do that kind of what, I think that was part of the suggestion, is you're going to have a commercial across the street and we don't need a 10-inch main for just residential. So we could look up the difference on the price between the 10 and the 8 and the, maybe possibly the residuals get that difference reduced off of their assessment.
The only problem with that approach though is, is if we go with that approach and we go with an 8-inch main and development does occur, we'll have to likely go back and resize that main to accommodate a larger scale commercial development.
But, Al, I just meant to keep the 10-inch main.
Yeah.
Keep the real, the size of it, but just find out the difference of a
Assess for the 8-inch.
Yeah, just, just find out the difference that we may be charged for it. Just the material cost, that, that was all. It wasn't to reduce, I didn't mean to reduce the size of anything.
Okay, we'll put that on a future agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, and just so you know, then we'll go through this exact same procedure. You'd have a public hearing and, and that sort of thing, okay? If you want to do that, you will need to go through this whole thing again.
That's okay.
Just want to let you know.
We need practice. Okay. Okay. Am I at number six?
Yep.
Okay, our, our second public hearing in the evening. Public hearing and discussion and possible action regarding the assessment of water mains for the 2015, 2016 water main installations for the south high pressure easement areas.
Okay, this is the water main that is planned to be installed going from Parkview Drive up to the existing water tower and then also in Schilbert Park from well number four out to High Street. This main's being put in because of the low pressure that's occurred up around the high school and in that area. I guess mostly, pretty much you could say the southwest portion of the city has low pressure and so that was part of this, this water main goes in and after this is in, then a booster station will be put in. The assessment hearing is because there will be a, the assessment hearing would be to establish a deferred assessment for what's, Pierce Firearms Incorporated, which is the pre-annexation agreement that there will be an assessment at time of connection or transfer of property. But you need an assessment hearing to, to make sure to establish that. There are no other property owners in this assessment that would be affected by that, but they are all listed because they, but the, the water main that's going in, their property is right next to the property that the main's going in. So for this assessment, there's only one property that would need a deferred assessment. The other ones have zero for their, for their assessment.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing.
Mr. Pierce is aware of?
Yeah, he has, he has the pre-annexation agreement and when we got the easements, he was made aware of, you know, things that are going on. And he also had this similar agreement for his property on the, on the southern part of Parkview Drive, so.
Okay, seeing nobody signed up or up at the podium or with their hand raised, I'm going to close the public hearing. going to close the public hearing.
I don't think that there's anything different that we can do on this. I think that we, I think that what we need to do for this, though, is we do need to do assessment option two. If the amount is greater than 500, allow for the repayment of 5% over five years. No?
We don't need to do that on this one. There is no assessments for any property owners other than Mr. Pierce. Mr. Pierce already has a pre-annexation agreement that outlines the terms of his assessments, so there's no, there's no reason to establish any terms down there because there's, there's no one else.
And so, I'm confirming that there's no one with a will in this area at all.
We don't need a motion, Howie?
No, you need to do the assessment motion. I was, there's, there are, yeah. There, everyone is connected to City Water except for the Pierce Farms, which has the pre-annexation agreement.
Okay, so what is the motion?
Do you know what that was, the pre-annexation agreement? Is it similar to this?
That they would, that at time of connection or transfer of property, they would pay for the assessment.
I'll make a motion that we approve the assessment.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Just, I just want to be clear on the record what, what the motion was.
What she said was approve the assessment.
Yeah, okay, like, maybe be more specific than that.
Which, okay.
I, I assume what you're, we're going to do is motion to, to approve imposing the special assessment with the payments to be deferred consistent with the, the provisions of the pre-annexation agreement. Would that be?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
For Pierce Farms.
Okay. I'll still second.
All right. Does everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and possible action on the funding of the pledges for the library renovation.
I don't know, do you want to take the second?
Sure. This, this came up when talking with Bill and Lisa about the fundraising campaign. Since it was a pledge campaign, there were several pledges that were, that were promised to be paid over a period of time, and that period of time was three to five years. And the maximum amount that we're, we're talking about is in the neighborhood of $700,000, although in conversations with Bill, it's probably going to be a few hundred thousand less than that, that we would actually need to draw on the line of credit. But, in order to complete the project by the end of the year, the contractors want to be paid rather than be given an IOU. And the most cost-effective method to do this was for the city to take out a line of credit, and then as those pledges come in, we would pay off that line of credit with those pledges. And that's what we are proposing here. And the line of credit will be paid off in three to four years.
And just to, just to be clear, we would only draw on the line of credit at the time that we required funds to pay the contractors for the construction or purchase of equipment. So, that's why, that's why Dan noted that Bill indicated it's likely going to be less than $700,000, it'll likely be substantially less than $700,000, because pledges will continue to come in throughout the year. It's not like we'll cut a check for $2.8 million on Monday, you know, we'll pay that $2.8 million over time. The gap that remains, though, is what are the, what is the cash in hand and what is the pledge amount? And that gap right now is $700,000, so we wanted to set it up for a worst-case scenario. And that worst-case scenario is everybody renegs on their pledges. And, and, you know, that's a very worst-case scenario, but that, that's why we developed in those terms. But, we wouldn't need to draw against that line of credit until the time that there's, until we've reached the amount of cash in hand and there's still outstanding bills. And at, and every year, as time goes on and more pledges come in, that, that amount gets smaller and smaller and smaller.
What happens if the pledges don't come in?
Then, if they don't come in, I think we, as a community, would be very remiss that we had that many people reneg on their promise, but ultimately, it would be, we would be on the hook for that.
I would assume that Bill will not let that happen.
That's correct. And there are, there are some substantial pledges in there, up to $700,000. Bill can go into details of this deposit up to $700,000. It's not, it's not 700 people who pledged $1,000. There's a handful of people that will take huge chunks of it out.
Let me raise your comfort level here a little bit. Currently, between the city's allocation and the actual cash that we've received, we are actually in the position that when the bids that you authorized releasing come in, we're actually in a cash position to be able to pay those construction costs. So, that our cash position right now is approximately $1,677,000. Of the dollars that are out there pledged, the largest portion is our biggest donor. So, the, the combined Parker Foundations have said $500,000. At this point, they've paid $257,000 of that, so 243,000 of the outstanding pledges are the two Parker gifts. There are several other gifts that are really sizable. When we worked on the mini storefront approach, you know, Dave's Ace Hardware and, and Piggly Wiggly and, and Badger Veterinary and so on, those were $15,000 commitments that those businesses made. I'm, I'm sure in some of those cases, we wouldn't have gotten the $15,000 commitment if we said, you have to pay the $15,000 all at once. And so, consequently, we're very, very comfortable with the idea that probably the cash flow during this year, in addition to that roughly 1.7 million that we already have in hand, that on a conservative side, it's probably 280,000 that will be received during 2016. The cash flow going out is such that we're in the position to pay the initial costs to the contractor with cash dollars, the, the costs that would be incurred in buying materials and, and those kinds of things, which will be early in the project. We're also in the position for essentially the second, third, that probably would happen sometime in the summer, so kind of a progress payment. The first that we might have to touch this would be late in the year, and our, our hope and our expectation is that we won't even then. Our effort will be to, you know, to not borrow those dollars. If, if dollars continue to come in, it may not even be necessary to touch it at all. What we're really doing is kind of managing the cash flow and providing for the opportunity. Just to raise further your, your comfort, we had a challenge grant from the Janesville Foundation of $50,000 that kicked in January 1st. So, they'd give us 50,000 if we raised 50,000. I met with Ron Oaks from Janesville Foundation yesterday, presented him with $64,880 that we've raised since January 1st, and they're cutting the check for 50,000. So, dollars are continuing to, to come in at a good pace.
Any questions for Bill? Do I have a motion?
I will make the motion that we allow staff to enter into a line of credit with First Community and Bank of Milton.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Bill. And the construction beat goes on.
I've seen some changes as early as April.
Woo-hoo. Item number eight, discussion and possible action to approve ordinance 418 and ordinance creating section 78 dash 403, print 17 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Milton, providing for warehouse as conditional use. As you all know, the plan commission did vote on this, and then it's up here for the city council to vote on. Howie?
This was, this was recommended unanimously at plan commission to the city council. This ordinance section would allow a warehouse type of business in a couple of the, well, I guess, it was asked originally for the church on Vernal Avenue, and it would, it's restricted to only existing buildings, and you need a conditional use permit if it is allowed, and there's no retail business allowed with this change in the ordinance. But, the ordinance does allow a couple of the older buildings in our three sections to be used for, for a more modern use, such as like a, you know, email, email or a computer types of business where you don't actually have customers at the, at the place. Most of the questions were answered satisfactorily at the plan commission from some of the residents. There was some attendance, and the person that had asked for this would have a pending sale, so if the council wanted to, they were asking them, maybe if you're approving the ordinance, if you could waive the second and third hearings.
So, and this is just on the ordinance, it's not on the conditional use permit. We're just talking about the ordinance.
Right, and the conditional use permit is, was contingent on the ordinance passing.
Right. I vote that we approve ordinance 418 and waive second and third hearings to approve the.
Second. Okay, I'll, there's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number nine, discussion and possible action regarding options for the Class B beer and Class B liquor license application from Dickens Partners, doing business as Dickens Partners located at 450 South John Powell Road.
This is an item that we have talked about a couple of times at the council, at the last council meeting. Representing Dickens Partners, Mr. Johnson appeared to give an update to the, the council at that time. It has since been asked of, of me and the mayor on a number of occasions to bring this back on the agenda, to take action on this license. As folks are aware, the license is being held by Dickens Partner, Partners. It was granted to that group back in July of last year by, by the council in hopes that they would be able to reopen the bowling alley. At this time, they have not been able to, there's still an active sale. I contacted Mr. Johnson to see if he could appear this evening in order to answer questions, but wasn't able to, to touch base with him and, and didn't hear back from him. So, at this time, as I've kind of explained in the memo and in a number of weekly updates, there are the two options that are kind of in front of us, is to start the revocation process, which is what it sounds like a number of folks are looking to do, or some simile, facsimile of a revocation process, or to simply allow Mr. Dickens Partners license to lapse at the end of June. Those are, those are really the two options that, that you have. Short of Mr. Dickens releasing, or, sorry, Mr. Johnson releasing the license on his own accord, those are really your only two options that, that I see.
I do have a question as to how much would be the cost of revoking the license, because it is a complex procedure.
I don't believe there would be any cost. You know, it is a process, it's, it's kind of a quasi-trial, for example. Mark, is that how, a good way to describe it?
Yes.
I think the only cost associated would, would be staff time, and if, if our attorney had to attend a meeting that wasn't part of his contractual obligation.
How many meetings do you think you'll be attending on this?
I don't think you want to set this during a normal council meeting because of the time that would be involved, and that you need to provide due process for the hearing. But, it also could be that if you certainly would move forward with proceedings, that the individual may enter into an agreement with the city regarding surrendering of the, of the license, too. That's, that's unknown, of course, that you can't count on that, but that is a possibility. And if you're interested in pursuing that as a possibility, then, rather than taking any specific action on it, I think it would be better to direct that the administrator work with, with me to examine the matter, to see if there's an appropriate basis for doing that, if so, what that would be.
And, and how long would the procedure, should you want to go forward with the verification? How long would that take, like up until June?
No, you would, it could, it would take, I think, at most two months.
March, April, May, June. I'm just timing the options.
That's, that's legitimate. I think that's probably one of the big, big things you need to consider, whether it's worth it, given that it expires at the end of June, so.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody looking for this other license?
At this time, I haven't been approached by anybody. I, I haven't, no.
If we don't have anybody looking for this license, and it, the process is going to take us just about to the end of this, the expiration date, I, I would make the motion that we allow them to retain their license for sale purposes until it's up for the expiration at the end of June.
I'll second.
You've got to stop and think, though, if it. If it takes two months now, we have somebody come in next week and want, wants a license, and we have to say, no, we've given it, we've got two months to wait, and now if you let him have it and continue on, that's going to deter it more. It's going to take longer then. I mean, we gave him 90 days and he hasn't done anything yet. I mean, I could see giving him a part-time 30-day at a time, but not another, just let it go.
I think Mark has something to say.
Yeah, if I might say this, I understand the motion, but I, I would suggest that the council may want to have more flexibility than it's giving itself by that motion, because by that motion, you're, you're saying you're definitely not going to be taking any action until it expires. In which case, if he files actually to renew it, you'll need to go through a similar process anyway. So, what I would suggest is if you're, if you're not contemplating directing any action being taken, that there's no motion necessary.
Is your options?
Then, then you leave, leave your options open in case something happens, as, as Maxine has suggested.
There wasn't a second, was there?
I, I did second it. Can I withdraw that, or do I have to vote against myself?
You need to cut off your nose in spite of your face.
We're going to vote against ourselves.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Wait a minute. What? He withdrew. He withdrew his.
Did he withdraw, or are you going to vote?
That's what was the question.
He withdrew.
Can he withdraw?
God.
Yeah, what I've suggested is it's appropriate to proceed with the vote on it. Just because they've moved a second, it doesn't mean they need to vote in favor of it.
So, as I was saying, all those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is defeated. Are we, so we're going to move on now to item number 10. Discussion and possible action to authorize the appointment of election officials for the election cycle of January 16th through December 17th. It's very controversial. Elena?
I know, so just very briefly, what this is, is actually kind of, thanks to the article in the Courier and the extra interest in election officials, we have a number of people that were not on my list a couple of months ago, so these are all new election officials, some of which worked yesterday.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is the other half going to vote on the motion?
We didn't hear it.
The new election officials. Aye, Dave, are you ayeing it?
Yes, I did.
Okay, all those opposed? The motion carries, thank you. We are not even debatable anymore. Item number eleven, discussion and possible action regarding well six repairs.
We had the inspection done out at well six, where they pulled the well pipe. After the inspection, the lower approximately one hundred and forty-five feet of the well pipe needs to be replaced. It did have holes in it, et cetera, in the threads. I was out there, also Ron Griffin from Water Department was out there, so we did observe the actual, you know, that it does need to be repaired, along with the well, you know, the well people that were doing the work. Their suggestion, and we agree with it, is that we should go for the repair, to do the epoxy portion of that, and you have a price in there for that. It's the eleven thousand two ninety-five price, and then there's also the seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to do the brush work. The repair on the back, it shows a larger total, but that's the inspection worth that they already had done with that, so that was the total cost of the well six repair. And so I was asking just if we could do a purchase order for that work, because it's over ten thousand dollars, so it needs City Council approval for that amount. And also then, I believe we have to publish in the newspaper that we've awarded this to our contractor, because it's over ten thousand dollars.
Where do we have the money?
It's in the current water utility. There's part of the, yeah. According to Dan, there's money in the fund for it.
We borrowed two point eight million dollars last August. There's ten grand there.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number twelve, discussion and possible action regarding options for merchant row infrastructure upgrades.
This item is partially an FYI. Well, it's, I'll say ninety percent an FYI and a ten percent ask. It's kind of a way of background. Last fall, we realized about sixty thousand dollars were the savings from the Parkview Drive project. At that time, we brought forth a couple of options to the council as to what we would like to see that money go towards, and one of the options was to pull that over into 2016 to be allowed to use for merchant row upgrades. We worked with our engineer to give some, what I will call rough cost estimates on options and alternatives for improvements on merchant row. You can see those options. I attached those options. There's really two projects, the North Lot, what we've dubbed as the North Lot, which is the lot that's directly across from China, the Chinese restaurant and where Super Hero Tacos used to be. And then there's the Southern Lot, which is directly across from First Community Bank. We got these cost estimates, and we went forth to a stakeholder group at Junction Pub last week or the week before. I know Linda was in attendance, we had probably fifteen, twenty people there, and talked to them about these options and what they thought, you know, what they thought was important for their businesses, and more kind of an educational process for both parties, so we could kind of explain the process to the stakeholders, but also learn from them what they thought was important. Really, what we found at that day was a little bit different than what we expected to find it, in that the property owners really wanted to see action done on the North Lot. And if you can recall, if you can visualize it, that Northern Lot is kind of just front end parking, right off of Merchant Row, the actual street. And then behind that, there's some gravel, and then there's kind of like a half wall, and people use it as parking, but it's not really parking. But they thought that that was the best option for them, to get additional parking, which was their number one concern. We heard that from pretty much everybody in the room, including those folks who have businesses right in front of the Southern Lot. The bank, for example, said, hey, it's more important to get that Northern Lot done. So I give that, I give all that information as kind of more of, kind of anecdotally, to kind of talk about the process, how we got here, and where we hope to go. But obviously, the most important piece of this is how are we going to fund it? We have sixty thousand dollars left over. If we wanted to pave that Northern Lot, we got a cost estimate of thirty-seven thousand. We could go ahead and do that, and we'd be okay. But both staff and those stakeholders felt that, you know, more needs to be done in that area. There's certainly more improvements that should be done, that could be done if funding was available. That Southern Lot is very tired, there's a lot of depressions in it, the concrete work is all dilapidated, those bollards that hold the larger streetlights have all kind of been, you know, crumbly, the traffic pattern in that area doesn't work very well, there's only one-way traffic in there, it's hard to get cars maneuver. So we had a long discussion with them as to see the other improvements that exist. So that's kind of the ninety percent of the FYI. The ten percent of the ask is kind of two parts. One, looking for approval from the council to expend approximately six thousand dollars of those unspent funds to get engineering work started on these improvements. And that mainly would include survey work. There's some very irregular shaped lots in that area, believe it or not. We would need to know exactly where pavement starts and ends, you know, where does the alley right of way exist? So looking for approval to utilize six thousand dollars of those existing funds to start that engineering process. But two, also looking for maybe direction as to allowing me to pursue options to look for additional sources of funding for these projects. And what those additional sources of funding would be is what I've kind of talked about with the council for several months now, is really TIF. We have an opportunity in which we could utilize TIF funds from our existing TIF six, which is the Crossroads Business Park, which is doing very well. We have the opportunity to amend our TIF districts to utilize funds from TIF six in the other existing TIF districts. TIF seven, which is the Merchant Row TIF, is in okay shape. It's above water, it's producing a small amount of increment every year, but nothing in the amount that we could ever see any kind of public improvements that we're talking, that we're looking at here. And then TIF eight, obviously, is upside down, and will likely never recover. That property's base value is far above where the existing value is, and that's for a variety of reasons. But if I was to pursue additional funding options, I could bring back some alternatives to the council, likely in a meeting probably April, maybe late May at the latest, that we could use, that the council could consider at that time, which would bring forth, would make it available funds, or give us the ability to do some of these additional improvements. So, kind of a long story, may seem a little confusing. Honestly, as I put these items forward, I start to confuse myself sometimes as to what part goes first. But I wanted to give you that background, and kind of give you the context of what we heard from the stakeholders, what Howie and I view as a logical approach, what our engineers view as a logical approach, and then see if we can start that process, start down that road. Not committing to anything beyond the six thousand dollars today, but really just looking for direction. I don't want to get too far out ahead of this without your permission and understanding of where we're going.
So, you're looking at the map that is in our packet, which is the very old one, where they're going to build condos or something under E?
That is actually the new Junction Square plan. That's the one that was just adopted last October.
Okay, I'm looking for.
It's a potential infill site.
Oh, okay. Okay, so is one of the questions, if you can get more parking in that potential infill site?
That is correct. That's what we have dubbed the Northern Lot.
And this, the street H mid-block two-way vehicle connection, how important was that in your stakeholders' meeting?
It didn't come up.
So it didn't fly?
Well, I wouldn't say that it didn't fly, it just wasn't discussed. What was more important to the folks in that conversation, and I think Howie and I would agree, is that we need to make the traffic circulation in that existing lot more logical, so it's not one-way, so you don't have to drive literally all the way. If you are currently driving down Merchant Row, and this is why I do think the mid-block break makes sense, but we're not going to pursue it at this time. If you're driving down Merchant Row, and you want to go to Frederick's, and you see all the stalls are blocked up, and then you just go past that one curb break, if you don't find another stall, you have to drive all the way down to Vernal, all the way back up front, all the way over to Madison Avenue to go back around. That's your only option. We want to fix that through this process. Now, I know you don't like H. I know you don't like H, I'm not really sure why. I know you don't, but we're not pursuing it at this time.
No, I'm just saying that here we are, here years ago, we had a street through there, and it was closed off and made a park area out of there, and now you want to turn around and spend the money to do it again.
Nope, 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 nope. I just said we're not pursuing H. Just said that.
I know you said that. I know you said that, but it was in the plans.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we're not going to pursue H at this time.
And also, I just, maybe you just forgot to mention this, but our city engineer was also at this meeting. So there was a lot of, a lot of good input from everybody.
Well, I wanted to say that I was really happy that that meeting took place, and you, there was really a lot of local owners there. And in the past, we haven't always had that large group of participation, so I think if the city is able to assist some way in investing in the Merchant Row area, it seems like it's been a little bit neglected, and if we can do it, we probably should look at doing it, as long as there isn't too much of a risk in, you know, doing alone from the other, you know, the other TIF where.
Right, and that will be part of the conversation. Once I get all of them put together, we will, we would look at that in April. But I just want to make sure everybody kind of knows, you know, what direction I would be going in if that's your preference. I don't want, like I said, I don't want to get out in front of where everybody really wants to be.
And I know this is going to come from TIF maybe and that, but I still don't want us to put this ahead of our still thinking about a new fire station.
Right. And that question, it's a good question, and it came up at that stakeholders' meeting. Under no circumstance would I bring forth any part of this, these estimates that would require additional borrowing. The only way that I would bring this forth is if we could pay for it in TIF. If we can't pay for it in TIF, then I simply think we would stop the process until a future date when we could identify another funding source. But Dan and I really do remain committed to this idea of not borrowing for, you know, a number of years, and keeping the fire station as the, kind of the next big piece of that borrowing process, so.
And we can't use TIF money for a new fire station.
Correct, yeah.
So, so just so everybody's clear on that, we're not, we're not, that's not even an option.
Yeah, only public infrastructure, not public facilities.
I move that the city administration begin some pre-construction engineering and the preferred actions for merchant row improvements with the six thousand dollars, and explore additional funding opportunities for additional public improvements along Merchant Row.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Maxine, did you want to put H in?
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, the motion carries. All right. General items, all right. Anybody with general items? Okay. I have one general item. I think somebody on the City Council has a birthday coming up. And does anybody want to raise their hand and claim that birthday?
Happy birthday, Nancy.
I'm old, I'm old, but you're very old. She's thirty-nine and old.
Happy birthday. I can't sing.
I think the worst part, as I can gently say, is that my daughter on Friday turns forty-six, and I feel so old. I cannot stay forty-five if she's going to do that.
That's true, that's true. Item number fourteen is team building, and I would like permission to defer team building, because I just don't want to talk anymore. Hey, that's my birthday present to Nancy, don't take it away. Item number fifteen, mayor and elder person reports, I'm passing. But we'll start with Dave.
I have nothing good to say.
Welcome home.
Peter?
Jeremy's passing, Maxine. Teresa? Nancy?
I'm passing, thank you.
Linda, come on, we're on a roll.
Oh, my goodness.
All right, staff reports to the administrator.
I don't want to steal too much of Alenda's thunder, but I want to say thanks to all the volunteers yesterday, and Alenda did a great job, and they did a great job. I heard a lot of laughter coming out of the council chambers, and I think that that's a good sign, so it sounds like everything went smooth, and kudos to that. When I, when I don't have to think about it or worry about it, that means that it went well, so great job.
Did you have the final count for how many people voted?
Four hundred and forty.
I know.
Yes. What was the number?
What was the number? Four hundred and forty.
Wow. And how many ballots did you have? Enough?
I did not have enough. Should I do my report right now?
Yeah.
So yesterday, there was an election, and we actually had a much better turnout. A lot of people did than we were expecting, and so we did not have enough ballots. Luckily, some of our sister municipalities had over-ordered, and they were able to cover us. So, yeah, I had ordered three hundred and fifty, and we needed four hundred and forty. So, yeah, it went very well.
Great, congratulations.
Congratulations. I think having a major judge in the news probably attracted people.
Yeah. Joint Fire? Inga?
I can give a joint fire report. MAC had their membership meeting this month, and it was very well attended, and our speaker was Chris Lucas from the Fire Department. He went over the inspections that the Fire Department does. There was a lot of questions, not only on the inspections that the Fire Department does, but also general questions. A lot of very good information.
Chief of Police.
My only update is our new squad that was approved as part of this budget year is in service since the last meeting.
Is it white? Just so I know, just to look out for it.
It is.
It blends in with the snow.
It is. Until you turn the lights on, and there is no mistaking the fact that there's a squad car. Very good lighting technology in it, and so thank you for the financial support for that purchase. It's going very well.
Director of Public Works.
Nothing, nothing extra.
Library.
We actually have a mammoth hunt in the library. The Ice Age Trail Alliance is coming in February twenty-seventh at eleven o'clock. Special story time, they're going to create and lead a mammoth hunt through the library. And we are still taking applications for the open children's librarian position until February twenty-second.
I don't have anything, just working on finishing up the year-end financial statement.
Okay, and then item number twenty-four, which I don't, is anybody here from the RW Implementation Committee? Jeremy? Jeremy?
We had our first meeting last week on Tuesday, and it was basically more of an orientation. We handed out the study to everybody, the operation manual, and kind of direction of how we wanted to start the next meeting, which will be next Tuesday. I think the immediate thoughts are going to be addressed towards staffing and then working our way from there, so it was very vague, very basic, so more meat and bones next week.
And I did request that all of the meetings and agendas be posted from this point on.
Thank you. All right. Teresa? Number twenty-five.
I am ended closed session, consideration of a motion to convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Statute Section 1985, 31, 3G, preferring with legal counsel for governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to become, to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved regarding a claim against the city.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We'll go into closed session.